We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. I'm not Kate Parker, who is president of the school board. She is out of town on business. So you've got the B team. I will do my best to lead us through. And I will turn it over to Dr. Maher to introduce the Education Foundation piece.
Thank you, Mr. Alwendy. And for those of you in attendance, those of you listening, I apologize in advance for my voice, but it is what it is. We have with us today members of the Education Foundation to talk about the considerable work that they have done and to paint for us a vision for their future. Now, I know as a board, you know the work that they do. But I think maybe for a second, I'll just kind of paint a picture of what I've seen in nearly three years of work in the district. And what I've seen is a foundation with great desire and great volunteerism to make a difference in the lives of our teachers and make a difference in the lives of our kids. And they do what they do without anybody paid to organize what they do. I find it amazing that our foundation gets done what they get done. And so the question, at least in the last three years, has been, what's the next step look like? And I think today, we're here to have that picture painted for us. From the Education Foundation, we have in front of us today Deb Kosky, Stephanie Gangopoulos, and Vernon Brown. And I want to thank you all for the work you've done and for the vision you have, but more importantly, for the time that you're going to share with us today. So I'm going to turn it over to Stephanie.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks for being here with us today.
Thanks for having us. So today, we thought we would talk a little bit about where we've been and where we're going or where we envision going. And so just wanted to recognize before we started off, our incredible board members, just as Dr. Maher mentioned. We've got a great group of volunteers. I've served on a variety of boards. Oops. And this is by far the most rewarding one that I've been on. And I think it's because our board members are so committed, they're so passionate about education. They're very engaged, they attend meetings. Whenever there's something to be done, someone always volunteers and jumps right in to do it. And it's also fun to see just the process from the very beginning, as we raise funds, as we get the teacher grants in, we distribute the grants, and then we get to go back in the classrooms and see the impact on students. And so you get to see everything from beginning to end. And so it's been a great group to lead, and I've been honored to be a part of it. Our mission, we actually updated this a little bit, tweaked it a little bit at our strategic planning session last November, is we champion teachers and students, for some reason it keeps jumping ahead, by encouraging, promoting, and funding creative and innovative teaching strategies in order to enhance and enrich the education of all Sioux Falls public school So a little bit about where we've been. I've been on the board, Vernon and I have been on the board for six years now. And when we first started on the board, really the primary focus was to raise awareness. And so we spent a lot of time, not only talking about the purpose of the Education Foundation, but also raising awareness among teachers about the grant programs.
Oh, babysitting.
Thank you. I'm not sure why it keeps jumping. About the grant programs that we have available. And so you may remember that we used to sponsor the President's Bowl raffle so that we could tell a little bit about the Education Foundation to all the spectators at that event. We also had a golf event that we sponsored for a number of years. Today, we sponsor the teacher swap meet, and then we also have our Innovation in Education We also recruited educators to serve on our board. Right now, about a third of our board members are educators, and they've done a great job of spreading the word among their colleagues about the grant programs that we have available. And so that's been a wonderful addition. And then we've met individually with local businesses and organizations. These are a lot of times one-on-one meetings where we tell them about the Education Foundation. And we've been very successful with that. I wish we had more time, that we could go out and meet with more businesses and more organizations, because it's really, it's hard to say no to us. Most of the businesses and organizations, they are connected to education somehow, and whether they are a product of the Sioux Falls Public School System, or they have a child, or they have employees that have children in the Sioux Falls Public School District. And so we have a very compelling story to tell. And our efforts have paid off. In the last three months alone, the Education Foundation has been featured on Kelo, KDLT, KSLO, as well as the Argus Leader. And I have to thank Rob Swenson for a lot of this. He's done a wonderful job. He creates a monthly newsletter for us, and then he does press releases to the media. And so it's been great to get a lot of publicity, particularly in the last couple of years. And we've also increased awareness among teachers. We just wrapped up our innovation and grant application process at the end of February, and we had a record number of teachers apply for those grants. We had 62 teachers apply for a total of $208,000, which was almost double of what it was last year, as you'll see on this next slide. So on this slide, the blue bars are the grants that we've awarded for the last four years, and then the red bars are the number of applications that we've received. And so you can see the huge jump in the number of applications received between last year and this year.
And if I can make comment, there's stellar applications. We want to fund every single one of them.
And to me, as a fundraiser, this is our case for support right here. This is the kind of need we have. These are the best of the best teachers we have, who want to do something unique, innovative, different, special. And they're asking for pretty minimal amounts usually to do this, do these things in the classroom. And we'd love to be able to fund them. It'd be easy to go out into the community and ask people to support these kinds of projects, but you know, we are limited by time. And so when I see this and think, okay, we're funding $50,000 of $200,000 worth of requests, it's just a really easy way to show people that there's truly a need for more funding.
And so I look back, and in 2009, we awarded $14,000 in grants. And as Deb just mentioned, this year, we're planning to award 50,000, so we've more than tripled that amount, which I'm really proud of. But like Deb said, I wish that we could do more, because you can see that we, our fundraising is not, or the demand is outpacing what we're able to fundraise. And then our endowment balance. Today, our endowment stands at about $113,000, or at the beginning of the year, that's where it stood. Admittedly, we haven't been able to spend as much time growing the endowment as what we would like, but it continues to move in a positive direction. And we also have been really pleased, there have been a couple of bequests that have been made to the endowment. We don't know the exact amounts, but we know that those bequests have been made in the past couple of years. And so where are we going? We know that there's a definite need for the Education Foundation in the district. You can see the growing demand for the Innovation in Education grants. And we'd also like to have more capacity to help fundraise for some of the school district's strategic initiatives. And like I said, we have a compelling story to tell. I know there was, Vernon and I made an ask once, and as we were sitting in the lobby, we were going to ask for $5,000, and at the last minute, we decided to ask for $10,000. And guess what? We got $10,000. And so I know that there are a lot of businesses that want to give back to education. They see its importance in the community, in terms of building community, in terms of workforce development, and they just don't know how to give back. So I honestly believe if we could get out in front of a lot of these businesses, there's a ton of potential. We've also spent the last two years putting together a comprehensive strategic plan. We started, we engaged Brian Bondi about two years ago, and he helped us put together a long-term vision. And I have a copy of this that I'll pass out to all of you following the presentation. And then Deb Kosky took us through a great exercise about a year ago, where we looked at our strategic markets, who are our target markets, and how do we connect with them? And then this past year, we brought out that long-term vision again, and we thought, okay, if we want to get here in the year 2035, where do we need to be in three years to get there? And then if we want to be here in three years, where do we need to be in one year? And if we want to be here in one year, what do we need to do this quarter to get there? And so we've started working on that throughout the last few months, and we've really seen some great traction with that process. And so looking at our long-term vision, we see our target markets really in three areas. Those that are connected to us, those that are committed to us, and those that have capacity. And so those that are connected to us are teachers that have received grants and administrators, as well as our past board members. Those that are committed are breakfast attendees, our donors, and our current board members. And those that have capacity are school district employees, parents, as well as grandparents, community businesses, organizations aligned with our mission, and estates. And so these are the areas that we really plan to target as we work through our strategic Our fundraising goals. For 2018, our goal is to raise $100,000. In three years, we would like to increase that to $300,000 annually. That would mean making at least 10 donation asks per month, having a signature event that's established, and proactively raising funds from school district employees. By 2035, we would like to be raising $1 million annually, and we envision we would need about 100 to 150 businesses or leaders donating on an annual basis. For the endowment, like I mentioned, our current endowment size is 113,000. By the end of the year, we'd like to increase that to 119,000. By three years, we hope to be at 150,000, with an established plan on how to grow the endowment going forward. And then our long-term vision for 2035 is to be the largest public school K-12 endowment in South Dakota, with a 3% to 6% annual growth rate. Our vision, as far as impact, three years, as I mentioned, we'd like to be more aligned with the school district's strategic plan, so that we can be supporting, actively supporting that strategic plan through any fundraising needs that the district may have, and be a true ambassador for the school district's needs. By 2035, we'd like our new teacher grant program to be at $500 per new teacher. We were excited this year when we doubled that program from $100 to $200 for each of our first-time teachers, but we'd like to increase that even further. And then also by 2035, we want to be impacting every school every year through our grant There are a few obstacles that are in our way for achieving the vision. The first is that our board has a limited number of fundraisers. We have about just a handful of board members that have experience fundraising, and so that has an impact on us. We also do not have any full-time employees dedicated to our mission. We did extensive research in 2016, where we looked nationally at education foundations, as well as locally. And most education foundations in districts our size have an executive director position. In South Dakota, the Education Foundations in Watertown, Rapid City, and Pierre all have full-time director positions. And so today, we're here to ask your consideration to approve hiring an executive director in 2018. We envision that the salary would initially be paid by the Sioux Falls School District, and that could gradually be transitioned over to the Education Foundation if we so chose. We estimate that the salary to be about $70,000 to $80,000. We visited with Brian Bondi, who is aware of several positions, executive director positions in the community, and also relied on expertise from Deb Kosky in that area. We envision the benefits to be paid by the school district. And we've visited with Dr. Maher several times during the past year, and he has indicated that there is office space at IPC for this individual. And then we also envision that they would report to the Education Foundation Board. And so I guess I'd open it up to Vernon or Deb, if you guys have any other further comments. Sure. Any other comments at all, before we open it up for questions?
I guess I would just add that when we did our research, I guess I want the group here to understand that, you know, we came to you after, I feel, doing at least a good two years' worth of strategic planning, looking to local experts, going through, you know, a really hard look at where we'd been and where we felt we needed to go, and then looking at other education foundations to really look at best practices. You know, what are we doing? That's good, but where also are our weaknesses? And so I was personally shocked to find that just about every other education foundation in the nation has a paid staff person. And they're much more closely aligned with the school district, with the school system. And so I think that's really, I want you to know that, we did validate our assumptions. And I really believe, I know this community, I've been in a number of roles here in the Community United Way, and now I'm at Sanford Health Foundation. This is one of the most generous philanthropic communities in the nation. That's probably well-known to most of you. But I really, in my time on the board, which I think's been three years now, I haven't encountered one person that I've talked to about the Sioux Falls Public Schools who hasn't had a favorable reaction to supporting what all of you do. So I just know that there's a strong case, there would be strong support. I myself, along with Stephanie and Vernon, have talked many times about how we are passionate and dedicated. I myself, as a parent, just, I can't believe the amazing education that my kids get. But I have a full-time job, and so do these guys. So we know that nowhere needs to be done, and I really think that with the guidance of, you know, all of you, as well as us, we could really make some great strides in a short amount of time with a full-time staff person.
Questions?
Do you want to walk them through that briefly?
Oh, sure.
Do you mind, Stephanie, maybe if I ramble for just a minute?
No, that'd be great.
First of all, when they said Dr. Maher is supportive, I don't know what they're talking about. I don't know. Actually, I'm incredibly supportive. And to reiterate one thing that I think Deb said, I think you've taken a very methodical process. I know you didn't just come up with this idea last month. In fact, the four of us met November or something like that, a while back, when this was really getting formed. I know you have talked about this for quite a while. I guess a couple of things I would say. Number one, that I think it is fact that most education foundations have an executive director. In fact, Kearney, where I came from, one-fifth the size of Sioux Falls, and I had an executive director. And let me, I don't think it's important for us to have an executive director just because Kearney does, or Mitchell does, or Watertown does. But we raise, in my opinion, an amazing amount of money with folks who have full-time jobs. If we could have an executive director who got their marching orders from this board and had an opportunity to work in between those meetings on the initiatives that the board put forward, I can't imagine the amount of money that the foundation would make. And I think we would realize that in very short order. So I do think that there's reason to believe that this would be an investment by the board, a short-term investment, for a very long-term gain and return on that investment. I really believe that would be the case. I would even say that they're probably banking on that, because they look for involvement from the school district for a brief period of time, and then have this position sustain itself over time. So that's another thing, I think, that's very important. I really believe, first of all, what an ambitious goal, $1 million a year in 2035, that's not very long from now. And that's a lot of money. But if you can imagine spending $100,000 a year to get $1 million a year, boy, let me know where I sign up for that, right? And I think you could get there. I really do. The final thing that I could say, for those folks in the audience who work at IPC, and you're wondering, did Brian really say there's space at IPC? I did, and now I haven't identified where that space is. But we would, that's certainly, I think, some in-kind, an in-kind contribution the district could make, again, for the return on the investment from the foundation. I don't know where that would be, I don't know what that would look like yet, but we would certainly be able to house that position here at the central office. The final thing I would say is, I think ultimately, if your yes or no to this isn't necessarily today, although you can seek clarification today for any questions you might have, but ultimately, your yes or no will come through the budgeting process, having us put this through as an expansion packet in the budgeting process. So thank you for allowing me to ramble, and yes, I'm incredibly supportive of the notion.
Just walked through, we passed out this label, the Vision Action Organizer, but it really just summarizes our strategic plan. And so it starts off with our core focus area, why we exist, what our niche is, and our mission. And then the next section is the 2035 vision, as well as our marketing strategy. The three-year picture is along the side with measurables, as well as what it looks like. And then on the backside is the one-year plan, our, what they're called, rocks for the quarter, our goals for the quarter, and then an issue list of, these are just issues that we identified that need to be addressed by our board in order to move forward. And so this is what we use for, as the basis of our monthly board meetings, and we work through those issues each month. We identify the top three issues and work through those. And then we set new goals each quarter, based on our one-year plan. Are there any questions at all around that?
I'm the newest board member. I came on, I took Carly's spot, but what I see this happening is such a streamlined, because right now, there's not even really a full-time phone anyone can call if I wanted to make a donation to the Sioux Falls Education Foundation. So by bringing it, I mean, where's the first place someone would think would be the school district to call? Bringing it in-house, it just makes it easier for us to reach out to who will be contributing to the Sioux Falls Education Foundation. And the other thing is, we already have a very active, successful board in place, so this executive director can just hit the ground running. It's not like she's going to have to go and get board members in place. So it's really going to be something that I think will take off right away because of the planning that you all have done. I can't take credit, I'm new, so.
You've been a brilliant.
I would just add one thing, that our challenge as the fundraisers is getting out to the businesses, but all it takes is one donation. Because when we involve them in giving a check to a teacher, even a $1,000 check, Carly, you've delivered those checks, those teachers cry, the rest of the team cheers for them, and business people that I've lined up to donate say, oh my gosh, I had no idea that $1,000 could make such a difference in a teacher's career and how she can, he or she can impact students. So they're hooked after one time of going out and seeing the impact of giving a check.
I had a couple of questions. Would you be looking for somebody locally to fill that position, or how would you?
Ideally, anytime you are starting a fundraising effort, you want someone who has local connections and local contacts. That doesn't mean that they would have to be. It just, it would be a quicker startup, if it was someone who knew, oh yeah, I know someone at Lewis Drug, or, oh, I know someone. That being said, if we got an excellent candidate from another community who had fundraising experience or executive experience, I think, you know, we'd certainly look at them.
And how much of their time would be spent fundraising?
We've also talked about that. I have some experience in my background with productivity and metrics for fundraisers, and how many, you know, visits, asks, and closes one should make. And so after an initial startup period, where that person would have to get to know, you know, the school district, and would have to know, get the case for support put together, I think, you know, what Cynthia said is correct. We've really done not to pat ourselves on the back, but especially Stephanie, I have to give credit for, the structure is there. So someone doesn't have to come in and create policies and procedures and, you know, financial statements, it's all there. And that's normally what an executive director in a new situation would have to do. So again, a quick startup. So I would say, within the first six months, the expectation would be that the majority of their time is spent fundraising.
True.
Thank you.
And I think the board can continue to play an important role, if it is someone from outside of our community, of connecting that person with local businesses and organizations.
There's no season for our fundraising. It goes on year-round.
Any other questions?
I'm just excited, because when I was on the board with you guys, this was a big topic that we talked about quite frequently. So I'm excited to see you all here with a product and a presentation to say, here's where we're at and how we want to move forward. And so, again, like Vernon said, going out and presenting checks to teachers, and even just looking through, I'm not an educator, but wow, the ideas that our teachers have, whether it's a kindergarten teacher, or a high school math or science teacher, or whatever it is, they're out there searching and finding innovative ways to engage our kids. And so they're all such important projects and ideas that they submit, whether it was $58, or whether it was, you know, $2,500, or whatever it is. And so this is really exciting, and I hope that we get that bang for our buck right away, and we can get more grants funded immediately for our students and for our teachers. And I think on the other side of that is the new teachers. And we, you know, as our population of teachers that we currently have continues to age, we're going to have lots of retirements, we're going to have a lot of new teachers, and the expenses of starting up a classroom are huge. And so to think that we did 100, and now it's at 200, and I love the goal of 500, because that can really make a huge difference in a because that can really make a huge difference in a teacher's classroom. So not just the grants, but trying to get people into the profession and supporting them during that first year, I think, is so important, too. So I'm very supportive all around, so thank you.
I think it's amazing what you've done without an executive director. I can't wait to see, should this happen, what you guys will do with the help. Thank you for being here today.
Any other questions? I actually sit on the budget committee, and I'm convinced, so I guess, you know -- Although maybe Dr. Maher and I have had a conversation or two about this, and I --
It's nice that they'll be office-ing right on the corner here in some divided
Yeah, not to talk over you, but we did have the conversation about where this person should office, and we talked, you know, could it be out of a home office? Could it be? And again, our conversation was, if you really want this person to ramp up quickly and get the return on your investment quickly, they really need to be where the action is. They need to get to know the folks here, they need to be able to work with Deanne, they need to be able to work with all these folks who are calling, because you're right, if they want to give, they're calling, and Deanne validates that. People call and ask questions. She can now have a person that says, hey, I got a live one for you, you know? But also just getting to know what happens here, and getting to know the administrators and the teachers, that's going to be key. Having someone off-site somewhere, it's just going to take a lot longer for them to get acclimated and integrated.
Long-term, want them to align with your goals as a board, with Dr. Maher's goals, and we think the only way to do that is if they are in this building and integrated in the school system. But they don't have the superintendent's office. I volunteered Deanne's office, but...
We prefer no windows, because we really want them to be out.
And not in the office. So you don't want to make a fundraiser's office too nice, that's cool.
All right. Well, thank you very much. And I am convinced, my first three or four years on the school board, I was on the foundation board, I watched in its infancy, as we looked at bringing some people with fundraising background onto the board, as we started reaching out to the community, and just barely getting the wheels turning. And I just, the progression is really great, the momentum is great. So you've got at least one vote yes when we come to budget time and working through expansion packets and seeing where it goes. So thank you, and thank you for your hard work.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. We will move on to committee reports. Mr. Tulkey?
As you might know, we just wrapped up the Summit League with the Sports Authority. It was incredibly exciting.
Bojacks?
Who won the --
I was unable to pay attention. So I'm not sure who won. I was snowed in at home, and the interstates were closed, so I was unable to get out. It was a great event. It was the second-largest turnout that we've had, and I believe last night, there was 11,000 people in there. So what a great thing for Sioux Falls in general, and to have the two South Dakota states. I'll just say this, I'll tell you who won. South Dakota won, and the state and the city won. So that was good. Had a PTA meeting. I accidentally ran into a quarterly meeting, and so it was a great meeting. I think that they're really struggling with keeping that open. They struggle with people having time, and they're actually having some language barriers, and families that are working two jobs or three jobs can't come in, and there are a lot of schools relying mostly on the booster clubs. So, I mean, it's a shame to see it in the shape that it's in, but I don't see a solution. I'm hoping that they can fill the state and local president spots and vice presidents, but I'm concerned about its future. Those are the only two meetings that I have been to. Cynthia covered me for insurance while I was at Teacher of the Year. And guess what? We're going to have a Teacher of the Year.
Really? Can you give us any hints?
It's not you. Oh, you're not a teacher?
Not a teacher.
And I'll tell you this, it's a teacher with the school district.
It's Sioux Falls Education Foundation. We've been getting ready for this presentation and for the grant program, and as she announced, we had a record number of grant applications, so really excited for that process. And they've started going through those. Affordable housing, we have not met. Insurance had a meeting, and they sent out all the bids for next year's plans, and it looks good. It looks like our increased average will be 4.77 for the district and 4.46 for the employees or staff. So really, much lower than the national average. So due to our good performances over the years, we're continuing to keep those costs pretty much in check. There, the one that's still out there maybe is the employee over. That one still hasn't come back what that amount is going to be yet for that, which is our stop loss for over $10,000 per individual. Calendar committee, we have been meeting, and I think we have a final calendar if we're done meeting now. And I think it was unanimous vote. The one good change that I thought was, came out, and I think that was unanimous as well, was there's two dates that were kind of in that March timeframe, and now that the boys' and girls' state tournament is the same weekend, that opposite weekend, we said, why don't we leave those two days off to that, so that we're not having teachers and coaches and students missing school? And that's where that calendar is going. We'll probably present that in a few months with that, since it's not for next year, it's the following year. It's not on, we need to get presented at that point. But that committee has resolved.
And we won't meet again based on yesterday's day off. That will just be a -- okay, perfect. Workforce development, I was not able to make it to the last meeting. Oh, sorry, go ahead. Yes, but nothing regarding our committee. Okay. I was unable to make it to workforce development last month because I had a work meeting. Deanne, do you have anything? I know we just have been working on our --
The continuation of redefining workforce development committee through the chamber and what it will be in that space, it's been a long process, but I do see progress in that regard, conversations being had that maybe were, you know, we thought we knew, but we really didn't. And so it's very tedious, but it is proving to be important.
Cynthia talked about calendar meeting. We have a half-meeting tomorrow. We did not have one in February, and we haven't had a policy meeting, because we're meeting a little earlier still. All right.
Budget committee, on the 15th, we have the big half-day session, and we will look at expansion packets, and hopefully by then, we'll have a better idea of what the legislature is going to have for any additional funding for K-12 by the end of this week. I hope we have some numbers, and we'll be able to plug those in as the budget committee meets. The Southeast Tech, we have our monthly meeting coming up just after we get done with this session. A lot of good things, as we've discussed in the past at Southeast Tech. Enrollment numbers are up, retention is good, just seeing improvement across the board, talking about things moving forward and how we continue that increase. As President Griggs says, two semesters of increase doesn't really indicate a trend, but we're, we've turned a corner, and I think we're going to see more positive things. Will be more conversation about where we go with the Vet Tech program. That's something that we've all spent time working with and working on, to see if we can't find the space and get that new program going, and take over where Globe University had had the program. For me, I think that's it. And anything else to come before the group? Then we will adjourn and reconvene at 4 o'clock for the STI portion. We are adjourned. Thank you.